We've got a great program for you today with Los Altos City Councilmember Nisa Flagger. Let me start by introducing our guest. Los Altos Councilmember and former mayor Nisa Flagger was first elected as the top vote getter to the Los Altos City Council in 2018, and was reelected as a top vote getter again in 2022. Nisa was the first black Los Altos Councilmember and mayor during her term on the council. Nisa has been a vocal as well as local and regional leader. Her leadership positions include, they're pretty lengthy and pretty impressive in my opinion. Former president of the Cal Cities Peninsula Division, first vice president of the Cities Association of Santa Clara County, executive board member of the Association of Bay Area Governments and CHAC, and vice chair of the Eight Bag Housing Committee. Nisa is passionate about public service and advocates for policies and programs that foster healthy communities and improve the lives of all of our residents. Prior to serving the council, she served on the El Camino Healthcare District Board and worked for the county of Santa Clara for nine years, representing the Santa Clara County Health and Hospital System Departments, among others. Nisa is an Emerge alum, member of the Los Altos Women's Caucus, and a 2020 Y WCA Tribute to Women Award Honorary. I'm getting exhausted just reading this. She is a Georgetown Law School graduate and is currently a Division Legal Counsel at HP. She is also mom to a 10th grader and a 6th grader. Please join me in welcoming City Councilmember Nisa Flagger this morning. Thank you, David. I have some prepared questions for our guests. And let me get started. At the end of this session, I'll of course, open it up to all the attendees. Nisa, congratulations on being reelected the second term. I know that you worked very hard in your election campaigns. Was it easier running for a second term?
Thanks, David, and thanks for having me here. I'm excited to be your guest this morning. As we said before others joined, you know, it's great that LAC is back. I still remember when we met in the Orchard Room. And as we get ready to celebrate Larry Barron this coming weekend, I have so many fond memories of hanging out with Larry during those meetings, both laughing and strategizing. Because we all understood that, you know, to know what's really happening in the community, you needed to go to the LAC meetings. So I am so happy LAC is back. I'm so happy you guys are doing this again. You know, Zoom, as a couple of you said before, really makes it convenient. So thank you all so much for doing this. And, 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 you know, I know everybody in this meeting, and I'm sure a lot of what I will say today, they've all heard from me personally. But I do want to thank everybody who was able to join us in person or on Zoom this morning. And so, yes, you know, running for a second term was somewhat easier, David. My first term, and we all know I ran in 2016 and lost by six votes, but we will not talk about that election. We'll focus on my 2018 election. And for my 2018 election, I had, and I shared this yesterday too, I had eight campaign team members. So I had a huge team. And so I had a lot of help. And so, you know, the challenges were there. We're still trying to figure out how to win an election in Los Altos. But having eight people and people who are really dedicated to the team and serving the community really helped. Fast forward to running for reelection last year. It's easier in the sense that I'd done it before. I was an incumbent, but as we all know, incumbents do lose in Los Altos. I couldn't take that for granted. And so I really had to ensure and remind people of my record for the first term. And so in some ways, it was easier. One, I knew what I was doing. I had a better idea of what I was doing. I had some name recognition and I had a record I was running on. The challenges were I had a much smaller campaign team. You know, 2018, I had eight people. This time around, I had three dedicated team members. And so what ended up happening was I would do more of the work because I didn't have as many team members. But the wonderful thing about that was I actually appreciated what my team members did four years before. Because then I realized how much work and time they really put into the campaign. And so I'll say to all current candidates, future candidates, really appreciate your campaign team members. Because I don't think we realize how much of their time they dedicate. And a lot of it is volunteer. We're not paying our friends and neighbors to work on our campaigns. So really wanted to make that plug for campaign team members. The running on your record, that's also a double edged sword. You know, on the one hand, it's great. I had a record that I know resonated with the community. Because I was able to point to things and say, you care about the environment, so do I. Here are the votes I took on that issue. You care about safe streets, so do I. Here are the votes I took on this issue. You know, you care about having a community center, so do I. And I was able to really go down my record and show the votes I took and know that those votes reflected what I think majority of Los Altosans also support. The downside of that, by having a record is people, and they do pay attention. They do read the papers, they read the town crier. They have more questions for you, and these are pointed questions, right? When you're running for the first time, they're like, what's your position on this? And, you know, you can say, you know, well, you know, hypothetically, this is what I would do, but you really don't know. Your second term, they'll say, well, we read in the town crier that you took this position. Is that true? And so for my second term, I spent a lot of time dispelling a lot of misinformation out there, explaining my vote and explaining my real record and showing people that the votes I took, even when they disagreed, the reasons why I took that vote. So overall, David, it was somewhat easier. But there are challenges still for an incumbent running for a second term.
Thanks, Nisa, and thank you for the kind words about LACC. Much appreciated. We all enjoy what we do and we're, you know, we feel we can help bring a lot of education, information to the community. What do you view as your biggest accomplishment in your first term?
So as I said, I ran on my record when I was running for a second term. And I am proud of so many things we accomplished as a council in my first term. But hands down, you know, the number one accomplishment has to be 330 Distill Circle, the first ever 100% affordable housing development that I worked with Supervisor Semidion, my council members at the time, community members, including Sue Russell and Marie Young, who are on this call. Staff, the city staff at that time too, very supportive. So it was really a community effort. And that is hands down, you know, the accomplishment I'm most proud of. I have been asked the question recently, what's happening with 330 Distill? We're getting there. They're still working on financing, but it will happen. And so I ask people to be patient. It's something that I know even this current council supports. And so it's just a matter of time that Los Altos will have its first ever 100% affordable housing development. And then a challenge, David, you know, there are many challenges bear in mind for my first term. Is it two and a half years? It was remote because of COVID. And so there are so many things I could point to that I view as challenges my first term. But I will say, my biggest challenge was COVID. Because it impacted how we governed as a council and how we interacted with the community. And so I actually think the specific challenges that came up, especially in that last two and a half years, they would have been so much different. You know, who knows how different? But I know they would have been so much different if we were meeting in person. And so I think the biggest challenge for me in my first term was really, and I was mayor doing my first term as well. And so it's really learning how to pivot and address the new challenges that COVID brought that we could never have imagined, you know, when I got elected in 2018. And figuring out how to continue accomplishing, you know, the priorities of the community and serving the community in this new environment. I think Los Altos did well. We have such a great community. We help each other, we look out for each other, and we're fortunate in so many other ways. But COVID hands down was the most challenging experience for me in my, in my first term.
Thanks for the comprehensive answer. What a time we all went through. To date, how is your second term as a council member been different from your first term?
Well, I'm six months in. So I'm still figuring it out. And these are questions I get all the time. And so, you know, I say, when I started, when I got elected in 2018, the composition, let's start there. The composition of council was different, right? I was serving with former mayors Jan Pepper, Jeannie Bruins, and Anita Einander. So, you know, that was my council when I got elected. And then fast forward to my second term. I now have three, you know, new council members. Sally and Jonathan obviously have been on council for two years now, but still the composition is different. You know, we have Mayor Meadows, Vice Mayor Jonathan Weinberg, and Councilmember Pete Daly. Now we're back in person. And so already in six months, David, I am seeing and feeling the difference. And you know, I will not say, I have been around long enough to say if one is better than the other. They're both great experiences. But I will say that, you know, in governing, and this is just maybe a takeaway from governing on any elected body, you know, personalities and approach to governing and leadership can make a difference, right? And Jeannie, Jan, and Anita govern differently. They approach things differently than Sally, Jonathan, and Pete. And it's, and being part of a legislative body, it's not an executive function where you're one person and you get to make the decision. You have to really be able to work with others and collaborate and try to pull together consensus and try to get at least three of the five to agree on something to move it forward. And so really understanding, you know, personalities, the priorities, the styles of who you're serving with is so important. And so I think our second term, especially because we're back in person, is off to a good start. I am happy to be serving with my colleagues. I know them well. And then Councilmember Lee Eng, she and I have been on council since 2018. So I know her well. And so, you know, I am looking forward to the next three years, really accomplishing things for the city with this new council. But very excited. And even this, and another thing that's different, the city staff is different. Our first term, we had a completely different city management. And so adjusting to that as well is different from my second term. But I am excited for the city, but what this new council will accomplish.
Thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the city over the next couple of years?
Housing, housing, housing. And there are many challenges that we'll face. Some we don't know, sitting here, just like how COVID happened. But I do think housing will be the biggest challenge. As many of you know, we're still waiting, hoping, praying from the approval from HCD, which is the State Housing and Community Development Agency. Hopefully that we will get that soon. But basically, that's a legal mandate that requires all California public jurisdictions to map out how they will support the construction of housing. And every jurisdiction is given a number over the next eight years. And I, and I thought our community or council did a really good job working with staff and our consultants to put together a housing element update. But that's the first step. Well, the first step hopefully is getting it approved. But that's the first step. We really have to move forward with getting these homes built, these units built over the next eight years. Not only because we need to comply with the state mandate, but also it's the right thing to do, right? When we think about the different priorities we have as a community, they all tie to housing, right? If you think about, you know, why many families moved to Los Altos, it's because of our great public school system. If we don't provide housing for school staff and other employees, then we won't have the support our kids need at our schools. Housing impacts our business community. And I know many of you are part of or support our business community. If we don't have housing at different income levels, then we won't be able to have the employees we need to support our restaurants and retail shops all across our different business districts. And of course, our employees, we have a lot of priorities. This council, we want to accomplish a lot over the next few years. And to do that, we need staff. And, you know, a lot of, there are a lot of other opportunities out there. And so we have to make sure that we have the housing available for staff members who want to live closer to work. And so I think housing is our biggest challenge. And there are different pieces tied to housing. I just want to add this because people think you adopt the housing element and then you move forward and that's it. As we know, with building housing, the city doesn't do it on its own, right? We do not build housing. Some other cities have created housing funds to be able to do this or support it much better than we can. But when it comes to building housing, the timing has to be right. The financing has to be right. You have to have the political will. You need the community engagement and support. And so having all those pieces come together to build housing, it's not that easy. And so in addition to approving, getting our housing element update approved, we will need LAC and other community members, Lair, Lar, all our community groups to continue to work with council to make sure we implement what we said we would implement in the housing element update. Because by building housing, it really benefits all of us and all our priorities.
Thank you. How do you prepare for council meetings? You know, what does your deliberative process look like as you're preparing? I know the, you know, the packet you get is oftentimes very lengthy. And, but so I've always wondered, like an inside look at how, how you prepare.
And everybody does it differently, David. We actually had, you know, we recently updated or norms, you know, related to when our notice and agenda go out for our council meetings. But for me, as a working professional, you know, the weekends do make a difference. So the packet comes out, you know, if we have a meeting on Tuesday, then under the old norms, we were required to have the packet come out 10 days in advance, which would be that Monday prior to that, the council week. That has changed, just for those who are listening and are not aware of this change. That will now come out on the Thursday, and that's really to support staff. But, you know, I start out, David, by looking, as soon as it comes out, I do go through at a high level because I like to see what's going to be on our council agenda. When you're mayor, you're at the table helping to put together the agenda so you know what's coming. But when you are council member, you really don't know. We have a tentative council calendar. But as many of you know, the mayor and the city manager sit together to say, unless it's legally required, what items can we balance and manage and have on the upcoming council meeting? And so as a council member, I really don't know what's coming. And, and so I look forward to when the packet gets published and I look through just to make sure I know what's coming, what will be on the agenda. And that's the first look I do. It also helps because there are many community members who will also look at the packet as soon as it comes out. And I may run into them at Pete's or somewhere else downtown, and they will squeal about the agenda item. And it has happened, full confession, in the past where, you know, I didn't know it was on the agenda. It was frankly embarrassing that a community member was telling me what was going to be on my council agenda. So that's the first step. I do quick, I look at it, I want to see what's coming and what the policy questions will be. And then the weekend before the Tuesday council meeting, it's really when I do my in-depth review. When I feel like I'm really preparing, I'll watch previous meetings. If it's a continuing issue, I'll also, you know, we just approved our budget. I will also go back and watch the Finance Commission meeting. So that weekend, it's really when I prepare. And to your point, David, that sometimes our packets are 500 pages, 300, 500 pages. You know, I look at that too during the week to figure out how, how many hours I need to carve out over the weekend to really prepare. And then, you know, most times by Sunday night, I feel good, I feel prepared enough. And then from Monday, Tuesday, I do start hearing from community members, especially on controversial items, you know, you know, people call it lobbying. You know, people are calling to say why they think you should support something or oppose something or get your thoughts on something. And so, you know, Monday, Tuesday, it's a lot of community engagement and conversation. And then before I actually go in to the meeting on Tuesday, sometime on Tuesday, I'll review a packet, my notes, just to make sure I don't need to change anything or follow up on anything. So that's what my process looks like. I'm sure if you talk with Vice Mary Weinberg, who I know is on, his preparation and process are a little bit different.
Thank you. How has serving as a council member lived up to your expectations and what, if anything, has surprised you?
So it has, and I'll just quickly give my background. I know it was part of my bio, where, you know, I've been around politics and public service for many years before I got elected in 2018. So I have had a general idea of what it means to serve as an elected official. And so I've always had that interest. And so it has 100% lived up to my expectation. I've enjoyed it, even with all the challenges. I am so happy I'm able to serve the community in this role. I also didn't come in with blindfolds. I was aware of the challenges, you know, the potential criticism and all the downsides that come with being an elected official. So it has 100% lived up to my expectations. You know, I always say, I actually gave a talk to a group of young men the other day. And I told them, there's nothing like local government, right? You have state, federal, where you are making big decisions that impact a lot of people. But when you're a local elected official and you're making decisions about, you know, safe streets or the environment or housing, you are impacting directly the lives of your family, friends, and neighbors. And what an opportunity for you to do that, using the skill sets to do that. So it has lived up to my expectation. I love it, I really do. You know, the downside is it is time consuming. And until you're doing it, I don't think you realize, even as I said, I've watched politics, I've, I've supported elected officials. I think that's one thing, if I had to say one thing that surprised me, it's until you're actually doing it, I don't think you realize how time consuming it is. And it, and it is a sacrifice. I think it's well worth it. I think it's rewarding to be able to do this for your community. But it is time consuming. I can't hear you, David. If you asked a question, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry about that. What are three things that you want people to understand about serving on council?
And I kind of touched on them just now, but I'll repeat them. So one, it is time consuming. It does take a lot of time from preparing, from our meetings. We meet twice a month. And sometimes, a lot of times, unfortunately, meetings do go past 11:00 PM. I know a lot of former council members will tell me, you know, their meetings used to end by 11:00 PM. I actually think it was a practice, more of a practice years ago, where, you know, no matter where they were in the agenda, they would end at 11:00 PM. But we have a lot of big issues that we're working on that do warrant going later for a lot of our meetings. And we want to get a lot done for the community. We've also had meetings canceled, and so sometimes we have to make up and play catch up. You know, we have summer coming up where we take a break. And so sometimes our meetings do need to go a little bit longer. But one, it is time consuming. It's worth it, but it is time consuming. You know, for any professional, working professional out there thinking about running for office, please do it. But just know you have to master time management. That really helps. The second thing would be, it is rewarding. And I said, and I know based on time, it's what I said before. So see answer to previous question. And then the third thing I would say, you know, it's fun. And I, and this may be a personal thing, I, I don't know what other council members would say, but I enjoy it. You know, even with the challenges, it's a lot of fun and there are fun parts to it. And you really get to learn about your community and engage in your community. We just had, we just opened our first ever outdoor pickleball courts at McKenzie. And a lot of people showed up for it. It just felt great. And it made, you know, it was fun being there with the community and knowing you brought something that the community really wanted. It took a couple of years, took a lot longer than a lot of them wanted. But in the end, we were able to do it, working, you know, with the community and staff. And so that felt really good.
Great. I think anyone and all of us, a lot of the people, you know, who are attending today, worked very hard on trying to make it a better community. And I think one component we always forget about is the joy and the fun that we can have doing it. All the hard work seems to submerge that. What is next for you after you complete your second term? Will you continue in, in public service?
It's my favorite question, David. So, you know, I just got reelected to my second term. And in Los Altos, we do have quasi-term limits where after you have served two terms, you need to take a break. I don't know if anyone has ever come back after taking that break. I have no plans to. But as I said, I do enjoy serving. But for me, the opportunity has to be right and the timing has to be right. You know, I am not someone who will run for office just to hold an elected office. I have to know that I would enjoy the role and I would be able to use my skill sets to really give back to the community. So the opportunity has to be right and the timing has to be right. You know, there's, you know, there are time commitments on every, on everybody's schedule right now, and there's a lot going on. And so you have to make sure you have the right time to dedicate to running a campaign in order to serve in whatever that next office is. And so for me, the timing has to be right, where it is the right time for me to seek that next office and be able to do it well. I don't like doing things half baked. And so if I don't think I have the time necessary to dedicate to it and the timing is all right based on my other priorities in my life, then I just won't do it. And for me, David, I have a life outside of public service. And so if the right opportunity never comes, I know, if the right opportunity never comes along or the timing, it just doesn't fit, I will be okay. I, you know, there, there are many ways to serve the community outside of elected office. I would love for an opportunity to come up down the road, but if it doesn't, it's okay.
Great, thank you. You know, I wanted to thank you for a great conversation and for your service to the city. You know, just as a resident, I can't thank you enough for all the hard work you've put in. I'm now going to open it up to the attendees for questions. I see some virtual, you know, what I'd like to do is everyone can raise your virtual hand and I'll call you in turn. And remember, please, one question per person and no speeches, please. Mike Abrams.
Yes, Nisa, I know the city's under enormous financial pressure, but I noticed the credit rating has just been dropped. What's being done to address that?
So we just had our first of two public hearings on our proposed budget for FY 2324. And I don't know if you're able to tune in, but our city manager and staff, our new finance director, they're on top of it. They recognize that we have challenges in all aspects of our finances. But they're working towards addressing it. And I am not a finance expert, Mike, but I have confidence based on what I know we've been working towards, ensuring that, you know, we're funding whatever projects and programs that we have. And we're also putting money away for a rainy day. An easy example, it's when you look at our reserves. So right now, we are required in Los Altos to have a minimum of 20% of our operating budget as our reserve amount. It dipped below that 20% over the last couple of years. And so what we have done as a city, it's we've built back up our reserve, but we have also included language that will ensure that it stays at 20%. Because I think in the past, what would happen is other priorities would come up. And, you know, you have to move money where you need to move money. And so the practice going forward, which I think is very important, is we will always maintain that 20% reserve amount. So, you know, there's So, you know, there's a replenishment plan that I know city staff has come up with, which I think will be very key in helping our rating. And we're just doing a better job, I think, going forward. I think it's a zero-based budget approach that are or relative, he's not new anymore, has adopted. But I do think the, the financial system, the new approach to budgeting and financing, and the effort and focus on ensuring we have adequate reserves and we're making the right decisions and using special funds where we can instead of general fund will all put us in a much better place going forward. So I am not, I'm not concerned. I do ask the community to bear with us because we have a lot of priorities, a lot of things we want to fund. But we also have to be realistic that we do unfortunately have limited funds or surplus is not as high as it has been in the past. And so it will take time for us to dig ourselves back up to being in a better financial position so we can do even more for the community.
Thank you.
Ginny Lear.
Yes, hi, Nisa. Along with housing, 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 parking, parking, parking is our other topic. And a lot of new things are happening statewide, state down to the local where requirements are being eliminated, basically, which affects not only parking for the six-story condo that may come our way, but also retail, retail choices and such. And I just wonder how, how we're, who's in charge of that? Is that Nick Zorn's relative to bringing you the details and how we're looking at that?
So I love the fact that, you know, even though I know many of you and many of your dear friends, you're not throwing me softball questions. No, I love, you know, I, I love this engage. Right. So, you know, I'm fortunate, I think, where I've, I've served on the A BAG board in different capacities over the years. I am now vice chair of the A BAG Housing Committee. So I am very familiar with the state laws. When they come down, we analyze them and see how they impact all these different things, including parking. And so I'm very familiar with the state mandates and the limitations that are being placed on councils and jurisdictions to require, you know, what's the saying, you park your, the building? On the other hand, you know, so I have that experience and I, I fully understand the state laws that would apply here. On the other hand, you know, Ginny, you've known me a long time. I have been pro parking. I've been pro parking downtown. You know, I support housing, but I've always pushed for more parking, even when we couldn't legally require the developer to bill more parking. We can go back and watch council meetings, going back to when we were in Lacey. I was one of the council members really trying to get our developers to include more parking spaces than there were legally required, because I have been concerned. And I know that, you know, hopefully there'll be, you know, less cars on the road and more people will take public transportation. And I'm a big supporter of that. But realistically, we know that people, a lot of people are still driving and we need to ensure that we have parking spaces to accommodate these vehicles. So having said that, Ginny, and to your point about, you know, what do we do about this? How do we still have parking for the retail and restaurants and residents in Los Altos? I actually think that's something the city will need to do. And this council has already indicated it's a priority of the council as part of our housing element update, but also, you know, if, if we move forward to the theater, figuring out how to build a parking structure downtown. This is something that I've talked about for years, but I, it's even more important now with the housing developments going up on first and the future housing that will go up on some of our parking pauses. We need a parking solution for downtown. And I think that is one of the ways we will address the parking concern that we hear from many of our residents. It has to be a priority as we build more housing to have a parking structure. And, you know, downtown isn't that big. I, you know, I've heard people say, but we'll have to walk, you know, a couple of blocks. We like having that parking spot right in front of the store. We will still have some of those parking spaces. But having a parking structure two or three blocks on one of our parking pauses, I think will be very helpful. And I know it's a goal. And I'll even say a priority of this council to figure out how we build a parking structure downtown to address this concern.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ginny and Nisa. Sue Russell.
Um, Nisa, this is sort of a follow-up question, but I think you know that RFP for the downtown affordable housing on the downtown parking plaza is going to be due out at the end of this year. And somehow it seems like we haven't solved the replacement parking problem yet. I don't know how we're really going to fund this structure and whether there's total agreement on building a structure, et cetera. So I'm just wondering how you think we're going to face that challenge quickly. And in terms of challenges on the housing element, I'm also wondering if you think it's going to be a challenge, get that there'll be pushback from the neighbors on San Antonio Road as that area is upzoned.
So let me start with the second question on the housing element update. And just really step back and applaud the work that went in to developing the housing element update because we did a lot of outreach. You know, I was on the subcommittee with former mayor Ian Under. And I like to say we reach different folks. And so we both did a good job, I think, reaching out to as many residents as possible, letting them know about the, how they engage, how they give feedback, how they give comments so that we could have all voices heard as we developed our housing element update. And so to your point, Sue, we heard from a lot of those residents and we know I will, I'll be the first to say, yes, you know, there are times when residents participate in the process, but they'll still come back once it becomes even more real and we're actually going to do the development. So I do think a lot of those voices and some of the concerns we heard during the housing element update development will come back, right? And we welcome them. You and I talk about this all the time. We want to hear all voices because we want to make sure that, you know, when we move forward to the extent we can, we address and factor it in all concerns, but we want to make sure everybody felt heard. And if for whatever reason, we're not able to accommodate their requests, we can explain why. They still may not agree with us. But at least we can explain why we're doing things the way we're doing them. And so I am not fooled, as I said, with building housing, community support is one of the pieces. I do think we will hear from our residents as we should. But I don't think it will stop what we have planned, right? It's the right thing to do. And I think bottom line is even a lot of these residents who may oppose some of the development, they, they get it. They support housing and understand why it's a benefit to the entire community. So we'll be ready, Sue. We'll work with everybody. And then the, the first question on the parking. Yes, you know, one of the ways jurisdictions fund parking structures and I say parking structures, I sometimes I say parking solutions because we really don't know if it's going to be, we don't know what it will look like. But I hundred percent support having a parking solution that replaces and has enough parking spots for what we're going to lose. And whatever that looks like, if it's multiple forms or underground, whatever it looks like, then I think those are the solutions we should explore as a city. And I know underground parking is more expensive. What we know happens in many jurisdictions is by having market rate housing. So the RFPs for affordable housing, which is what all we supported because we need more of those. You know, one of the ways to do it is if you have a market rate developer as part of the process, you know, a market rate developer could help to fund parking structure. You know, we, we, we don't have a parking people, you know, there's park and Lou, but we don't have any parking fees in Lou fees or something really where the city has a pot of funds that we could use to build or contribute to a parking structure. But it doesn't mean that we can't support the construction of a parking structure in other ways. You know, we, we control the processes. We, we have the ability to waive certain things. And I think everything should be on the table as we consider how do we get a parking structure built downtown? Parking is a priority for our community and, and to support our business community and our residents, we need to have these parking spaces.
Thank you. We still have some time left, so I'm going to open it up for another, if people have a second question, I see Ginny's hand up.
There's Margot. Margaret had her hand up, David. I don't know if you saw that. She has had her hand up. Margot.
Oh, okay, great. No, I don't see Margot's. Maybe I don't see her on the screen, so.
Okay, I don't want to practice doing meetings on Zoom, David. I know where to look.
Okay, can you hear me? Thank you. Nisa, you're terrific. Thank you for all of, all of your work and all your comments. My question is, a few days ago, I was in Cook's Junction, which as you know, is closing. And maybe people are upset about that. I, I am, but there's a woman who came in and said, we have to talk to city council about all these business closures. And so I thought that that was interesting. And I guess I using this as an example, there's two things. One is how do you communicate to, to the community what the role of council is? And, and then the second question is, Cover Story is also closing. You know, the, the coalition deals with the business environment and you do too. And so what, what do you do? Please, thank you.
Thanks, Margot. I, you know, I mentioned when I was running for my second term and even with my first term, you know, it's dispelling a lot of rumors and misinformation and explaining my votes on some issues. But part of what you do too, when you're running for election or reelection is educating or residents about council, what we do. I get questions about school board or county on incorporated areas. And so I do have to explain the role of council. And I like to joke, limited roles, you know. And, but so, and Margaret, that is key. I rarely, I know firsthand that there's so many residents who still don't fully understand how much we can do and with some things, how little we can do. And, and it's, 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 you know, and I know community engagement is part of our priority. It's a subset of one of our priorities this coming year, and we can all do a better job. And it's something that we continue talking about, ensuring that, you know, we continue to educate our community on different things, but also the role of council. And, and I always welcome, we have office hours. I, you know, if people come in and that's one of the best ways to really talk to council members, attend their office hours or submit an email. We do respond to emails. I think all of us do. If you have a question and, and you know, you see someone in Pete's or, you know, even in the person you ran into at Cook's Junction, Margot, you know, feel free to say, why don't you send council an email? Here is their email address, council@losaltosca.gov. And have them, you know, communicate with us because that's another thing. We get a lot of emails. And I can't tell you the number of times where I respond to a resident and they're like, oh my, you know, I can't believe you responded. I appreciate it so much. I think people don't even realize that, you know, it's so easy to say, like, send an email. We will respond to your email. But specific to, you know, what we can do, it's very similar to housing where as a council, what we can really do is create the right environment to support our business community, right? To help our business community thrive. We want our business communities to thrive, not only because of the sales tax, but also because we know one of the things that a lot of our residents love about Los Altos is our downtown and our other business communities, being able to bike or walk, you know, to a grocery store or a Lotto's deli to pick something up. They really value that. And so it's to our benefit as a city to figure out how we support our business community. So we have the downtown vision plan that we're moving forward with implementing other aspects of it. You know, we're figuring out lighting for downtown and wireless is coming soon, folks. Let's hope sooner rather than later. And, and you know, when we hear from our business community at Village Court about how we can support them, you know, if there's a access San Antonio road, they, there's traffic issues there. We hear from them. Then we try to work with them to address that issue. So as a council, there are ways we can create the right environment and support our business community. But you're right, you know, i- i- it's unfortunate, but you know, we don't, we're not kicking Cook's Junction out. We would love for them to stay. You know, but there's just so much we can do and will continue to do, I'm sure, as much as we can.
Thank you.
Ginny Lear.
Yes, thank you. And of course, it's the, the owners of the buildings who are making those decisions sometimes, Nisa.
Yes, and some of the, I, Jenny, thank you. Yes. A lot of our business owners aren't property owners.
Right. My second question relates to my first one in relative to parking, but it's also park in that we, if, if parking, I just read this maybe in Palo Alto, parking, if parking is requirements are reduced dramatically or eliminated, park and Lou fees will not be allowed to be, they may not be a viable thing that a city can do. I mean, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission in the eighties when they became a thing. And now we have this very nice reserve in our park and Lou fees, which can help build a parking structure with a park on top, I've heard, or anyway, so that is part of the parking issue. If parking is reduced, can we still impose park in Lou fees or our parks? Now, I just read a letter. I couldn't lay my hands on it this morning, that surprised me attacking the council for not buying a park. Were they talking about the one by three thirty distal? And how did that, how did they get angry over that? So if you would address that one for me, thanks.
So I haven't seen the letter, Ginny, but based on, you know, other things that have been raised by other residents, I'm assuming it is that part next to fifty fifty on El Camino. And, you know, for legal reasons, I can't get into the details. But I will just step back and say, you know, the, and I do want to make the distinction. So the park and Lou fees are different from the city considering establishing some kind of fee related to parking. So the park and Lou fees, and I don't know what you read, and you know, I learn every day. And, and so whatever I say today, I could read something coming down from the state that says differently and I'll get educated. But the park and Lou, because open space, green space, the environment are top priorities all the way up to the governor. These are top priorities for the state. I would have a hard time imagining that the state laws would eliminate the ability for cities to build a park in Lou fee, because the whole idea between the park and Lou fee is to ensure that either the developer, when they build these housing developments, they provide the park, the green space, or they give us the fees. And there's a formula related to it. So I actually think I'd be very surprised with all the new housing laws that they eliminate the park in Lou fees. Now regarding parking, that is interesting because, you know, we don't have that established here in Los Altos. But I do think there are ways to figure out how as a city, we can support and fund separate and apart from working with a market rate developer to do it. How can we fund and support the construction of a parking solution as a priority for the city? And, you know, with creative solutions available, I think we can do that. I do hope that there are ways for us to still fund through development fees, some parking, because I think that's an easy one. It actually makes sense where, you know, in, and, you know, if the, if the state law is now allowing developers not having to provide, you know, X number of spaces per unit, then should jurisdictions then be able to, you know, get a certain amount of fees that we could then use to build parking? Or is there flexibility with the park and Lou that we could, even though it's park? How do you define park? Could we use it towards parking solution? So I do want to make the distinction between park and Lou and any parking fees that we may be able to possibly create and fund for a parking structure. And that's still something I know as a city, we would need to explore. And Ginny, I feel like there was a third question in there that I missed, so it's three, three, zero.
Just that we're park in Lou fee is going to be eliminated because of action taken at the state level. But you've explained it again really well. And I will find that, or I just read it yesterday. So I will find that article hostile to the city council on not buying a park. And that had not been a big discussion item. I don't think it had really come before the council in a public session. So I don't know where that, you know.
Our council, Ginny, so just quickly, I know we're almost at time, David and, and Joe, and you all know I'm a talker. So yes, so quickly on the park in Lou fees. As you know, Ginny, for years, you've been collecting millions of dollars in our parking. As you know, Ginny, for years, you've been collecting millions of dollars in our park and loo fees and we haven't touched a lot of it. Because one of the things, and this is public, that we considered doing with the park and loo fees, was to have enough to purchase a North Los Altos Park if the opportunity came up. That's public, that's something I know the Parks and Rec Commission had supported. This fiscal year, staff for different reasons decided to start using more of our park and loo fees. And so what's happening is we are tapping into the park and loo fees. And the concern expressed was, you know, but what if a North Los Altos Park becomes available? Will we have enough park and loo funds to purchase it? So that was the concern and the response from staff was, you know, this fund will continue to grow and it will, with more housing development, it will continue to grow. And there's still millions left in the fund. We were still proactively looking for a North Los Altos Park. It is still a priority. And if it does come up, then we'll figure out how to fund it. But that was the big concern by using the park and loo funds for other things this year. Will there be enough available? There's a North Los Altos Park that comes available? Because that was always one of the things we thought we could use the park and loo funds for.
Where would north be considered? Would this park by 5150 be considered North Los Altos?
It would.
Okay, thanks.
I think, I, I know from talking to Nisa before we started, that she has another meeting to go to at 9:30. I just want to, I don't see any more hands up. I want to thank Nisa for a great conversation. And I'm going to just say that even though, yes, you're a talker, your answers are chock full of content. So chock full of content always to me overrides. If, you know, it's hard to get to the content without a lot of words. So just speaking for myself, I very much appreciate that. And I think the attendees do as well. Your, your answers were very comprehensive and, you know, much appreciated. And I want to thank not just Nisa, but thank all the attendees for, for being here with us and sharing this conversation. I have a few announcements. Our next meeting will be two weeks from today, Friday, June 30th, from 8:30 to 9:30. Please join us for an update discussion on the Los Altos Downtown Theater. And if you would, number two, if you'd like to be added to the LACC mailing list, please send an email to info@losaltoscommunitycoalition.org. The email is posted in chat for your convenience. A big thank you to Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation for providing LACC with financial and income support. And I want to just, once again, everybody, please join me and thank you, Nisa, for a great discussion today. And we'll, and we look forward to seeing everybody all in a few weeks and enjoy your June weather.
Thank you, David, and thank you, everybody. Thank you. Have a good summer.
Again, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.